City Council Committee on Ordinances and Legislation will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kadim?
Here.
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Pereira?
Here.
Chair of Liberty Law?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input. Madam Clerk, is there any citizens in here?
I have none for this meeting.
Thank you. See, none. Item two is a proposed ordinance. It's salary schedules, which was referred February ninth, 2021. Mrs. Sahadi?
So what you have in front of you is the current ordinances for the non-union individuals. That's section fifty dash three oh one of the ordinance table, as well as fifty dash three oh two, which pertains to those individuals that are by contract. The last time the ordinances were changed were in seven one, 2017, although you will see a couple of positions that have been added to the ordinance table, and you'll see the coordinating date, so seven one nineteen or seven one eighteen. Each of these positions or these salaries were increased based on the ASME contract at one and a half percent over the last couple of years. So for fiscal year 2019, so seven one eighteen to nineteen, nineteen to twenty, and twenty to twenty-one, the budget that you're currently in. I have added a column for what the current salary is for those positions as well, and after a conversation with Counsel Kadim and Counsel President Ponte, we thought it might be best to increase the ceiling not to exceed positions to be more than just the one and a half, so that we can cover ourselves into future fiscal years. Right now, of course, fiscal year 2022 is the budget that we're putting together. At this particular point, none of the union contracts have been settled for fiscal twenty two, so we honestly don't know what the increases will be for any of these positions. But we are estimating a new ceiling, and again, a ceiling, so a not to exceed. So it's not indicating that any of these positions will be paid the ceiling for fiscal twenty-two, but it gives us some ability to not come back to this ordinance committee and to the full council in the next year by providing some ceilings not to exceed. In addition, on the section three oh two, there are three positions that, for some reason back in the day, had a not to exceed amount, where these are really contract positions. So on those three positions, our only recommendation is to remove the not to exceed amount and just leave it per contract. As you know, the contracts would still need to come to the full council for approval. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions.
Counselor Dion?
Yeah, in terms of the not to exceed, what percentage are we talking in terms of an increase?
So what we're proposing, Counsel Kadim, I think we said three, correct? We went with three?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's on the bottom, honestly. Adjust the ceiling not to exceed using recommended three percent.
Okay. And that's three percent of the current salary, correct?
That is three percent of what the salary would be. So let's just use the very first person, the account manager. It would be three percent of the sixty-two, seven forty, which would be what the not to exceed is today, as opposed to what the current salary is in that particular position of fifty-five thousand, seven fifty.
Right. And that would be going per position?
That's correct.
Right, that was my question. Because ultimately, the change is basically their base salary plus whatever the increase. Lately, it's been a one and a half percent.
That's correct.
We don't know if it's going to be a half a percent, no percent, one and a half.
Exactly.
But that's the increment, whatever the...
Right. So for the three years that have passed, where the union contracts were settled, it was one and a half for each one of those three years. But you are correct. For fiscal twenty-two, it could be zero, it could be a half, it could be one and a half, it could be two. I mean, it's unknown right now, until those contracts are settled, what that percentage would be. And policy in Flor River has been that anyone in this section of the ordinance, fifty dash three oh one, receives the same increase as the ASME contract.
So for the purpose of this adjustment and this conversation, nothing, none of this has anything to do with any additional or other raises or any other factors?
No, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Just to clarify, Mrs. Sahadi, some of these, though, there is the ability to give raises. We spoke about this yesterday, correct?
That is correct.
So some of these people might be getting a raise. If these are raised, then the mayor has the ability to give that raise, correct?
So if you look at the very first one, account manager, please, again, just for something as a starting point in particular, because this particular individual is not at the ceiling now. So you are correct. If the ordinance, in this particular case, the ceiling not to exceed, went to sixty-eight, eight fifty, that could be proposed in the budget. Now, US Council always has the ability to reduce any positions that are in the budget. But you are correct. That could, if the ceiling were sixty-eight, eight fifty, that position could pay sixty-eight, eight fifty.
And in the section fifty-three oh two, all of the ones that are per contract, if there's room to move these there, you could, in fact, raise these salaries.
Well, these are all per contract. So with the exception of the three that have an amount, which honestly, a new ceiling was not even proposed. And I'll just, you know, use mine as an example, rather than talking about anybody else's. Back in 2017, it was not to exceed one forty. It's proposed that that would stay as per contract, so whether it's myself or somebody else, as the Director of Financial Services, the mayor would have the opportunity to negotiate that contract for whatever they needed to negotiate it as. The city administrator, you know, we've talked about that at several city council meetings. It's been in the budget over the last couple of years at, I believe, one forty-four, but with it being by contract, assuming that the council votes the budget, it could be negotiated for really any amount that the mayor thought the individual is worthy for a salary.
So changing these, these three in particular, per contract, one of these had come down in December with an increase. So that's not going to be coming before us anymore, because this is going to take care of that, changing this to per contract?
That particular contract, I have to remember why it came down to you. Did it come down to you because of ordinance?
Yes, so it came down to us because the raise that was wanted to be given by the administration exceeded the ordinance amount, so...
Then you are correct.
So I just know that counselors had questions on that particular one when it was coming down in December, so I just want to point out that that is on here, and then...
That is correct.
The administration on any of these, per contract, will have the ability to put that number where they want it.
That's correct.
Counsel Pereira?
You know, the question that I have, and I want to see something, a current salary in the city administrator, I know we don't have one, but I'd like to know, what is it going to be? We're just going to leave it an open-ended contract?
In the FY twenty-two budget, the mayor is suggesting that we carry it at a hundred and fifty thousand.
A hundred and fifty, okay. So I'm wrong. And on these contracts, a lot of these contracts come down to us, but not every one of them comes down to us.
That's correct.
Okay. So which ones of these come down to us? Is it just human resources?
I believe all of these contracts came down to you when the individual is first appointed to the position. The renewals are only reflected in the budget, with the exception of the Director of Human Resources, which by ordinance needs to come down to you on each of its renewals.
Why is that? What?
It was an ordinance that was passed years ago.
Well, I think that should be changed, myself. Nobody else comes down.
That's correct.
But for renewal, I think that's...
That's correct. And we can certainly propose that change as well. That's not in this packet, but that's in a different...
Which way did you want to see that changed?
Well, I'd like to see that she doesn't have to. That she doesn't have to. I mean, they have the, you know, when somebody first gets hired, fine, they come down, but after that, it just, it seems odd that out of everyone, she's the only one that has to come down.
Yes, and that's in a different section of the ordinance. That's correct.
Right.
Yes.
So I would change that, whether it be changed in ordinance or...
No, it would have to be, and we could certainly send that request down as well.
I think that would be good. I'll make a motion to refer to full council.
Motion made. We do have councils that would like to speak. Can you hold on?
You can do that.
Motion made. Do you have a second? Second by Counsel Lee. Any discussion? Counsel Pereira, you yield?
I yield, yeah.
Counselor Kadim?
Thank you. Just in terms of, I know we had the conversation about the three percent, and that essentially... Is it? Yeah. So the three percent was obviously trying to get us within a three-year window, so that we have what the collective bargaining agreements come down, so that we know when that was going. Just looking at some of these, some of them were ten percent, so I mean, it's probably a percentage above, you know, the three, 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 the nine percent we were looking at. However, just, if we take the account manager position itself, so if you look at the current salary, you got the fifty-five, seven. So, you know, I had done the math at two percent, because, you know, that's where we're seeing the, you know, cost of living adjustments taking place now with, on average, throughout the community. So a two percent would equal about twelve hundred bucks. So if we multiply that, we're talking about thirty-six hundred dollars. So if you add that to the current salary, it's still under the not to exceed of the sixty thousand. So why would we increase? And I'm only taking that one, because that's the first line, so...
No, I agree.
I think it's applicable to some other positions.
It is applicable to some of the others.
So I guess I'm just trying to figure out why we're making the adjustments now on positions that don't necessarily need to have their not to exceed increased.
So these positions, as you know, are positions. So when these positions got put into ordinance, they got put in based on what the positions should pay. Some of the current salaries are based on what the talents were of the individual that was hired for that particular position. So this is not about the person in the position, but the position itself. So if we use that same position that we're talking about, I mean, I'm not, I don't even have a name that goes with that particular individual, but if that individual was no longer in this position, it was the chief's recommendation, and this committee, as well as full committee, who felt that the sixty thousand was a reasonable salary for that position. In this particular case, the individual hired didn't necessarily have some of the experience that a sixty thousand dollar person would be paid. So I chose to look at the position, what that salary was, and what the proposed ceiling would be, rather than the particular individual. I completely agree with you. I wouldn't necessarily expect that person to get that type of an increase in any given year, but these were the not to exceeds to follow the original ordinances, if that makes sense.
No, it does. Okay. That logic, I follow the logic, and it makes sense. So in terms of, and you're just saying, in the event that individual either leaves, or there's a termination, and you're trying to fill it, and we don't have anybody internally, if you're trying to really attract somebody into that position that can truly do the job, you wouldn't need to have that not to exceed...
That's correct.
...over a three-year period. So obviously, they wouldn't be coming in on the high ends, but...
Right.
...give you the buffer, so we're only coming down every three years.
Right. And if you hired, I mean, I don't know, we could pick up any one of these positions, but if you hired somebody that came in with significant experience, and the person who's leaving was, doesn't have that type of experience, you still want to have the ability to pay them what, you know, this council believes, or this committee, and then the full council believes, that the position is worth.
Then I just had a question with, and sometimes it's just easier with names to know what position we're actually talking about, but I agree that I try to leave the names out, so that we don't, you know, obviously, we don't skew the discussion that we're having in terms of salaries, and we're just solely looking at the position and the job duties assigned to it. I think it's like five lines down. Administrative Services Manager?
Mm-hmm.
What is that, and what department are we talking about? And then I guess my...
You know, that's a really good question. I believe that's water, but I'm not positive myself.
Okay.
So there you go. So I have no names against them either.
So, and I see it's vacant, so I was just trying to figure out, you know, we're going from sixty-nine thousand to eighty thousand, so I'm just trying to figure out, to make sure that we're...
Oh, yeah, that's right. It is vacant. Sorry, I didn't even get across the page, so I won't know who that is.
Well, at least it was vacant, I don't know when you put this together, so...
Yeah, no, I'm sure it's still vacant, because we haven't really filled any positions, to be honest with you.
So I was just trying to figure out why the jump there. That's also a ten percent, and I don't know if it was just a comparative analysis with, I guess, with other Administrative Services Manager.
Yeah, I'd have to look that one up, Counselor. I'm not sure what department that was even assigned to initially.
Okay. And then just going down the line, I mean, I was just looking at some of these job descriptions. Are all these job descriptions utilized, or are there some that are just sitting there that haven't been utilized? And if so, are there any, I guess, job descriptions that we can clean up, that either are outdated, or the job descriptions associated with them are no longer of value to the city?
Exactly. So if we, and I just happen to know this one, because I was involved in, as you know, the audit years ago. So Audit slash Grants Manager.
Mm-hmm.
That particular individual's no longer with us, and that position is vacant, and there is really no intention to fill that position.
Okay.
I believe you know who that belonged to.
Yeah.
City Collector. We now have a Collector Treasurer, so that position is vacant. We don't have any intention to separate the Treasurer/Collector, again, or at least in the near future, but that's always available for separation if, you know, this council decides that the Treasurer/Collector position isn't working out for them. I'm just trying to see a few others. The Forester is vacant. We talked about that at some of the briefings. We have a hard time hiring a Forester. I don't know that, you know, at some point, a Forester may be someone that is available to work for the city and will take the position for that salary. So there are a few of them in here that are currently vacant, that are not, haven't been used for a little bit. Whether or not it's the will of this group to eliminate them, you certainly can, and then we can come back at some other point and add positions back. We don't want to muddy the water. I think when Council President did this with Mrs. Coelho back in 2017, they did eliminate a lot of them that were included in ordinance that are no longer being used. You know, on the contract ones, you know, to give you an example of something that hasn't been used in years and is now going to be used, and it does actually say vacant, is the paralegal. So the Law Department is interested in having a paralegal in their department. That position has not existed in the budget for a number of years, but it does exist in section fifty-three oh two, and it will be utilized in the fiscal twenty-two budget, and it's currently being advertised. So there are a few that are vacant that we wouldn't want to necessarily eliminate, and there are others that the city has not utilized the position in quite some time.
Okay. Just as one, Counsel, I'd like to even, I know there was a motion on the table, even if we just table it, just to have the administration just review again, to see which, I guess, which job descriptions we foresee using in the future, and the ones that are really outdated, just remove it, so that it just makes everything a little bit cleaner. And the other question I have, and I think this kind of might tie to that, I guess, that little task or assignment. When we look at the Deputy Police Chief, we've got a Deputy Police Chief twenty years, we've got a Deputy Police Chief twenty-five years, and then we've got a Deputy Police Chief at twenty-eight years. From my standpoint, a Deputy Chief is a Deputy Chief. You know, I just, I don't know why we have the twenty years, twenty-five and twenty-eight years, and I don't know how you're counting the twenty years. Is it twenty years of service coming into as a deputy? And I don't know that, in order to be a deputy, you necessarily need twenty years of service. And I could be wrong by that, but I guess I just, I don't know if we actually need those job descriptions as they are outlined, and if it really truly makes sense with the need. And I guess it would lend to the question as to, because we've heard that there may be some restructuring over in the Police Department, you know, is it, does it make more sense to do not to exceed, you know, X amount for a deputy, regardless of what the deputy is, and then internally, you can figure out what the, you know, the steps may be?
Right.
Or maybe, maybe it's, you know, one year, year one of a deputy is just similar to the steps that we see, the salary tables and the collective bargaining agreements with the other unions.
Mm-hmm.
You know, year one to two, you're at this rate, two to three, you're at that rate, or whatever the case may be.
No.
Or just individual contracts, right?
I was, well, that's what I was going to say. One of my recommendations would potentially be to have the deputies be per contract under section fifty-three oh two. So yes, you are right. I hesitate to want to table this and clean it up some, but we can. I don't know if, how you would feel about, you know, cleaning it up before it goes to full council and just eliminating, lining out, redlining, a few of these positions. That would be okay with me, that are vacant, and then we would be able to come back to you if we decided to fill those positions at some time. I mean, I don't necessarily have a strong opinion one way or the other. They're currently vacant. But like, for an example, the Assistant City Auditor, that is currently vacant, but that position will be filled in the twenty-two budget. Somebody's being promoted into that position. The City Auditor herself has indicated that the Assistant is really necessary in that department, so I don't want to just go through them and eliminate the vacancies. The same thing with the Assistant Assessor, too. That is, I believe, in the twenty-two budget. So it's not, there are a couple in here, and the one that jumps out is the Audit slash Grants Manager, because that's not being used. And I certainly see your point with regard to the deputies.
Yep. And then, so I guess I'm fine with if we want to refer it, and then if you can have those changes for either second reading, or whatever the case may be, and we just make the amendment on the floor.
Well, in that way, what's reflected in the budget would actually not be in, would be in compliance with the ordinance, as opposed to having positions in the budget document when you receive it in May, that are already out of ordinance.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I did have a couple of questions on some other ones, but they kind of really all fall in line. But I guess my final question, and we had talked about this, is what are we doing in terms of internal controls from the financial team, as departments are requesting increases to ensure that we're not running into a similar situation, where people are getting paid more than what's already in ordinance? You know, because there's a number of them. I mean, we don't need to necessarily highlight which departments, but there are a number of them that exceed what has been approved in ordinance. So have we looked at, you know, whether it's the Auditor's Office or the Treasurer, verifying to make sure that, you know, all the employee, or even human resources, that all the employee change forms that are being submitted for payroll are being, I guess, checked with or verified with ordinances, to make sure that they're not exceeding?
Yes. I know that's being done now, both with payroll, so out of the Auditor's Office and as well with HR. However, I don't know in the past whether it had been, and some of these are over by a small amount, some of them are over by a little bit more than that. You know, you look at a couple of these, they're two hundred bucks, they're three hundred bucks. I don't know how that happened. I don't know if it really was part of the one and a halves that never got calculated, or part of the holidays, because as you know, the holidays play into a part of this. This coming year, we'll have two holidays. This past year, we had one holiday. That's one of the things that we're talking about with the unions, or we will be talking about the unions going forward. The City of Flor River has historically paid a holiday pay when the holiday falls on a Saturday, as opposed to giving them the Friday off, or the following Monday. If the holiday falls on a Monday, I mean, a Sunday, they get the Monday off. You know, one of my contentions is, if the holiday falls on a Saturday, it's still a holiday, give them Friday off, or give them Monday. And there should be no such thing as holiday pay.
Right.
You will see the holiday pay still reflected in the twenty-two budget, but that's one of the issues that I think needs to be negotiated, because it kind of defies logic.
Well, I think for these, I mean, I don't know that you necessarily need to...
But I think that's part of the reason why some of these are over.
Right. Yep. So, and because I'm not trying to make this political in any way, so I'm not going to talk about the different positions, but there are two positions. One, you know, is a contract, but it said not to exceed seventy-eight thousand. The individual is currently getting paid eighty-four thousand, so, you know, it's roughly almost five thousand dollar, you know, increase there. Then you got another one, ninety-eight thousand, they're making a hundred and, a hundred thousand five hundred sixty-four, so twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, there. So I just, it's just one of my sticking points. We, you know, from my standpoint, we have ordinances and checking balance, and I just want to make sure that we...
No, I agree. And even the two that you just pointed out, you know, the first one, that was as of seven one seventeen, well, both of them really, or actually, all three of them, right? All three of them that have the not to exceed were as of seven one seventeen. So first of all, we really should be adding the one and a half, the one and a half, and the one and a half, because they did receive those increases. So that automatically increases the not to exceed, and then I don't know how that compares. I think, I think a couple of them still might be over slightly.
So just in, I know I said I had only one more question, but I have one last question. So in terms of this, and it just goes in line with what the Chairwoman had just mentioned, out of all of these, just for full transparency, when we go into the not to exceed, which, I guess, which, and if it's not now, if you can have it to us within the next couple of days, which positions do we anticipate significantly having an increase? I know she just talked about one particular position. I'm not sure if there was more than one that you had in mind, but where do we see them going up increase? Because the last thing I want to do is have, get this approved, and then, you know, we're getting a contract, or I mean, going through the budget, or after the budget, we're seeing people just getting these increases, and it's just a roundabout way to get the necessary...
No, I understand.
So that everybody's on the same page, saying that we were fully aware that this position was going to see an increase, this position was going to see an increase, and this position was, so that we're not going back and forth on conversations.
I can certainly do that. And actually, I do see one on here that honestly would already be over, based on what was asked for and what the administration agreed to in terms of the new budget. So that really needs to be adjusted as well. Cemeteries.
Yeah, we have. I yield.
Counsel Lea?
Just a question on the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So a question on the paralegal position. We have Assistant Corporation Counsel, two different positions for Assistant Corporation Counsel. And we've already taken on, we're in the process of taking on KP Law as well. So I'm just curious as to what duties would the paralegal be doing that's distinctive from those two positions? And is it something that we would be able to get in service in a different kind of way, whether with the services that we already have now, or the positions that we already have out there now?
Certainly. So the positions in the Law Department were union positions, and quite frankly, the Law Department should be confidential in non-union positions. The prior administration created two union positions that were non-union initially, and those positions really should be non-union, so this is one of the individuals, assuming that she applies for and receives the job. So that would be someone that's already in the office. And the other one is the Workman's Comp position, Workman's Comp Claims adjuster. That particular individual was doing Workman Comp cases. She's since left the city's employment, so that is an open position right now.
Mrs. Sahadi, can you just clarify a little bit on what Counsel Kadim was asking? So anybody in section three oh two, that's per contract, we wouldn't know what, if those were going to be raised until we see the next fiscal year budget, correct? That would be our...
That is correct, unless it is a new employee of the city.
And, so we wouldn't know if any of those people got an increase, or those positions, I should say, got an increase until we see the budget? And then if there are additional monies in a salary line item in their department, you could also use those as well, correct? If they're not used, if someone wanted to give a raise?
Yes. It, yes.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that what can happen.
Yes, so if you, you know, I mean, some of these, let's pick, let's pick the chiefs, okay? The Police Department salary is, salary and wages line is significant, and they have a lot of turnover, and they have a lot of vacant positions, and they have a lot of overtime. It is possible that that position, that contract, when it came up, could receive an increase, and it wouldn't necessarily come to you if it was given to the same chief that we currently have, and it would fit within the confines of the total salaries and wages, because there were enough of funding. If you take a small department, let's just take my department, I'm the only... let's just take my department, I'm the only person there. So, if it's not in the budget, it would be difficult to not have to come to the council for a transfer into salaries and wages because there are no other salaries to offset.
Right. I just want to make sure everyone understands that there's different ways that that can happen. And the other question I have is, can you just tell me, one of these is vacant and one isn't. We have Assistant Commissioner of Recreation Facilities, Director slash Director of Recreation Facilities. That's vacant. And then we have Assistant Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees, Director of Trees slash Cemeteries. Why are these titles like that? And then there's a Commissioner, Commissioner for Recreational Facilities slash Director of Recreational Facilities. And then a Commissioner of Recreational Facilities and Cemeteries, Administrator, Administrator of Recreational Facilities, Cemeteries and Trees. I think really good.
Yes. So, one of them, one of, one of them, and honestly, I'd, I'd have to go back and look at which is which, to be honest with you, so I don't misspeak. But one of them is Mrs. Smith, and one of them is Mr. Pirano, and one is vacant.
Two are vacant.
So, honestly, I don't want to speak out of, out of school here, so I'm not quite sure which is which, because you're right, they have similar titles.
The Commissioner of Recreational Facilities and Cemeteries says it's vacant, but the Assistant Commissioner of Cemeteries and Trees is, is, I'm just gonna ask you, is Mr. Pirano the assistant or is he the director?
That one might be, that might be my fault. That might be my fault. Yeah. I might have put that on the wrong line, Counselor.
So, then in that case, there is the room to move there already on that.
Yeah, you're right. You're a hundred percent correct. Now that I see what I've done, you are correct. So, this position, and both those assistants would be vacant.
Okay.
So, I can clean this up, you know, as Counsel Kadeem said, but you're correct.
I'm, I'm sorry. Counselor?
Well, before, when you mentioned at the Cemeteries, Mrs. Smith was the assistant.
I know. There was a whole bunch.
When he retired, then she stood there. Same thing with Pirano. There was somebody else. Before he got there, there was an assistant. So, I mean, I, I look at the Director of Productions for FRGTV. That's been vacant. Obviously, we don't need that person. Some of them, though, I would keep because you don't know if you're going to get them in. I mean, weren't they talking about the Reaval Specialist?
Yes.
That's now vacant, and that's a position. We already did the briefings with the mayor on the budget, and those were some that were coming in. So, you know...
Yes. I would, I would caution us to just eliminate the vacancies because they're, right. We would have to look at it and really think about whether, and, and the one that, again, comes to mind because we haven't utilized the position in quite some time is the one that says Audit/Grant Manager. That was...
So, that there's some positions that I think we should keep in there, that they will be filled, rather than have to come back again and fill them again. But we can clean it up. I yield.
Counsel D'Yon.
So, yeah, I was gonna ask on these vacancies, there's eighteen vacancies. How, do you know how many are anticipated to be in the new, in the twenty-twenty-two budget?
I, I don't, to be honest with you. I'm guessing a half a dozen of these anyway, based on just kind of quickly looking at the names.
That won't be.
That will be.
Oh, a half a dozen that will be funded.
In the twenty-two budget, that's correct. A number of these, just to, to kind of bring everybody back a year or two ago, a number of these were funded in the twenty budget and in the nineteen budget. Some of them actually had individuals in the positions. But because of all the unknowns with, you know, the pandemic last year, if you remember, we pretty much stripped all of the vacant positions out of the budget. So, you're going to see a number of departments this year that we are refilling positions that were either filled back in nineteen and twenty, and, you know, someone retired or left. We left those positions vacant and unfunded in the twenty-one budget because of all the unknowns that we are now trying to shore those departments back up in the twenty-two budget.
Okay. And my other comment would be, if I'm to be honest and transparent with this whole process, at three percent, for a total of nine percent over a three-year period, someone being able to be increased without any recourse, without any approvals, to me is just a way of circumventing to a certain extent. So, in other words, let's say somebody, the administration wanted to give any individual, particular individual a raise, but the council didn't feel, for whatever reason, that that should happen in that given year. By an automatic three percent, three percent, three percent, that process can be circumvented. Is that a correct statement?
Well, I certainly wouldn't look at it as being circumvented. I think that management has the right, so the mayor has the right, whoever the mayor is at the time, to increase someone's salary or bring someone in at a salary higher than the individual who may have left in order to, and we'll use the city administrator. Your, this one, that one happens to be by contract, but if it wasn't, your city administrator that left was making less than what we're putting in the twenty-two budget in order to hopefully encourage or entice someone to take the position. So, yes, you're correct. But if it's in the budget and you've approved the budget, then with the exception of what Pam just indicated, most of these departments don't have a lot of leeway in order to give increases mid-year.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly the bigger ones do. Like, we use police as an example. I mean, the bigger ones definitely have some leeway. But the smaller departments have no leeway because they're budgeted exactly as to what the salaries are.
So theoretically, we could, we could go with this, but when the budget comes down, if we thought one exceeded the limit we think it should be at, at that point, it could also be reduced.
That's correct.
Okay. Then with that, I'm more comfortable. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Yeah. Anything farther, Counsel Kadeem?
Just quickly, so just to elaborate. So, I, I think, one, it's important to understand we're the legislative body. So, I, I think that's why it's important when we, when we're going through this is really to remove the personalities and say, whatever the not to exceed is, is that worth it for the position that's there, right? So that, while I agree that, you know, at, at some point, administration can pick and choose as to where it is, but as long as the legislative body is looking at it and the logic behind it is job description, you know, and the responsibility associated with that job description, does it equal the not to exceed, right? If we do that, then regardless of personalities, I, I think we're protecting the city. You do run into a situation where, again, you know, you can have mid-year, because once you start getting into larger departments, it's, it's total salary, right? So, it may not just be, you know, community maintenance. It could be, you know, salary that's combined in parks and wrecks and the cemetery and, and things like that that roll up, because you can have transfers without the council approving it. So, there, there could be a situation and a scenario where you may not have a say at it, but you, you will see it in the next budget and then having those conversations at that point. But from my standpoint, as long as we're looking at it, at positions and whether or not those positions are worth the not to exceed, I, I think we've done our due diligence in terms of, you know, giving the administration, which is the executive branch, the opportunity to have that flexibility, which if they're doing their job correctly, they should have that flexibility, especially when you're trying to fill these positions based on whether it's somebody, you know, you have somebody internally who has the potential to be groomed and go into that, like we're, we're starting to see at a lower salary. Or if we don't have anybody and we need to, to recruit somebody, the only way to, to get that is to be competitive in, in the market, right? So, we, we have that flexibility, and I think that's, I'm comfortable with that. What I will say, Ms., Ms. Chairwoman, that, you know, I know I said we'd move this forward. I just, with the changes that we're going to see, and I think just the full transparency of what increases need to be had, to refer it now to full council, I think is a little premature, because I, I still think we haven't done our full due diligence as a committee to forward it. I would just say that we don't prolong it. I think the administration can still put that, those salaries in there. We know that. But I think we still should have at least a, you know, a quick review of the final product before we submit it to the board.
Agreed.
With that, I guess I, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Did you want to speak, Counselor?
No, sorry.
Let's go to the second, so she can...
Let's move on. I was just, it's got to go through three readings anyway. So, she's going to come back. You could come back again and do it. But I don't know. Table, table. Okay.
Motion table made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel D'Yon. On favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Counselor prayers, opposed. Item three is a resolution, public art policy, which was referred, federally considered in twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, everyone.
And it's a very long resolution. Counsel D'Yon put together. Just give your name and address for the website, please.
Sandy Dennis, one thirty-two Highland Avenue.
You have to share.
Sandy Dennis, one thirty-two Highland Avenue.
Are you, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I know we only have a few minutes, so we'll try to be extremely quick, although, although we do have quite a bit of information that we wanted to share with the committee, but we could certainly provide that. So, those of you who don't know, maybe not so much the people at the table here, but those listening in, Creative Arts Network was established eight years ago. Our mission was to create, support, and promote arts culture and tourism in the city. We've done that in a variety of ways. Initially, we did that with a lot of programming in the city. Some of the events you'll all remember was the Festival of Trees, Block Island, Sunset Cruise, Art Music Festival on the waterfront. Since then, we've been doing more projects, most notably the Hortensia Project. We helped create the fiftieth cultural district in the city of Floraville. That was a five-year effort. We've also built very strong relationships with MassDOT, Coastal Railroad, Mass Cultural Council. We've spent over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over the last eight years, all spent here in the city of Floraville and the community, mostly paid to artists and musicians. We have no paid or salary individuals on the, on our payroll. We also have a presence in the city at, on Columbia Street. And we have, we think we have a very, very good track record of success promoting and supporting arts culture and tourism in the city. I'm going to let Sandy Dennis go ahead and outline, which is our next project, the Public Arts Policy, which we think is absolutely important and critical to the city of Floraville. It's something that's done throughout the Commonwealth and across the country, and we think that Floraville is more than ready for a public arts policy.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. But the first thing that I'd like to do, just so people understand who we are, especially around the table and in the community, I want to just read what our mission and our vision statement is. Our mission is to celebrate, stimulate, and nurture arts, culture, entertainment, and tourism in the greater Floraville area. And our vision is, the purpose of Creative Arts Network CAN is to raise awareness of Floraville's art and culture scene. Its goal is to create a vibrant, sustainable art and culture community to help build on economic development and tourism. CAN is a collaboration dedicated to invigorating the Floraville cultural scene, increase public accessibility, and support art and culture initiatives. Doing this effectively will create economic opportunity for the local area and promote tourism. Increasing collaboration and public awareness will improve the effectiveness and quality of programs offered. Reaching new audiences will help drive economic growth and increase awareness of greater Floraville as a choice destination. And I only read that because a lot of people seem to not know what it is we do in the community, and we do a lot for art and culture. We are probably the lead art and culture organization in the city, and we have been for seven years now. But the reason that we decided to work on a public art policy is because it's becoming national and international and a local initiative. Governor Patrick started it when he was in office, and Governor Baker just amended that ordinance for Boston and the Gateway Cities, which we are one of. And part of their initiative is to include one percent of all construction include public art. And if you go on vacation, one of the first things we all do is we want to pose with a picture near something, whether it's a statue, whether it's a building, whether it's a tree. That's all public art. We feel that we already have a lot of public art in the city, and we really need to inventory that public art. We need someone, a commission that would be formed, that can take on keeping a collection of that public art, whether it's a memorial, whether it's a sculpture, whether it's a public garden. And then, we did a survey during COVID. Dave, if you want to just read that.
Yeah, just a couple of highlights, the survey was done here in the city of Floraville. Some of the questions and responses that are significant are, how would you rate arts culture and creativity in greater Floraville? Nineteen, fifty-two, fifty-two point eight percent of the people gave it a three out of five. What should arts, culture, and creativity reflect? It should be timeless. How supportive do you feel community leaders, public officials, and organizations are to arts, culture, and creativity in the city of Floraville? Thirty-eight point nine percent gave it a three out of five. So, those are some of the significant findings. Would you like to see more public art in greater Floraville? Ninety-one point seven percent said yes. What type of public art would you like to see? Sculptures, public gardens, web parks, historic landmarks, city, and city buildings were the top three. So, those are some of the significant findings. There was a lot more. But that was a survey that we did done last year at the beginning of COVID.
And then just, and I, I'll go quickly, because I know that you all have a meeting. But there's ten reasons, basically, that people want public art in their cities. And first of all, it's public. It's for everybody to have access to. More people through the survey that we did want to be doing more things outside. They want to do less things inside. Everyone has access to art. It enriches our physical environments, bringing streetscapes, plazas, town buildings, and schools to life. It's a great tool for civic engagement. It builds social capital, encourages civil discourse. It provides professional opportunities for artists and cultivates an environment in which the creative class thrives. It boosts the local economies. It's an initial investment in place-making, and there's lots of people, including ourselves as an organization, working on small place-making areas within the city right now. It creates supportive learning environments for people, and it raises public awareness and input. And there's all kinds of data that we've done. We've done a lot of research on this project and for public art. And I think that the next step for a sustainable art and culture community for Floraville, public art policy is the next step in doing that. Once you vote in a public art policy, then a commission would be formed. And the commission would basically be formed through the mayor's office and, and basically the city council to form that commission with the hope of some of our input on that, with some really key people that have experience and true experience in public art. And I, I think you'll see, the community will thrive a lot more. It'll clean the city up a lot. We're working on the Hortensia Project. People have clearly told us, you can put all the plans you want together, but we went right to the people of the city and the area. They told us. They want more public art. They want more public gardens. They want to be outside more now because of COVID. Less people want to be inside. We're working on a full public art display with MassDOT that hopefully we can unveil in the Supreme. And it'll be an outdoor exhibit for the first time. So, we're doing what the people of our city are telling us they want. And, and our hope is that the council and the mayor's office will support actually doing a public art policy. And it'll be good for us. I mean, we'll actually have a good inventory of all of our public art, and someone can actually be, a commission can actually be a gatekeeper for all of the new public art. And that'll encourage a lot more artists to do more things. They'll be strategically placed. And having it on the books as an ordinance, it'll sustain it. It'll carry from administration to administration to admin, especially with a commission in place. So, it'll be a self-sustaining law that will build our art and culture scene. And, I mean, it's what people are yearning for right now. They want to be out there. They want to be doing and seeing things again. But, go ahead.
So, yeah, sorry, I don't have time. So, just to summarize what we're really, what you're really going to be doing, really, basically, you're going to be really codifying the framework for providing public art in the city of Floraville, demonstrating the city's commitment to public art through ordinance, saying this is important to the city. It's significant enough that we're going to create an ordinance that's going to allow, provide the framework for providing public art in the city forever.
And we provided some ordinances, and I think the first piece of information in the first packet that we provided you all, we actually wrote kind of a draft ordinance ourselves. But we would be more than happy to sit with Corporation Council and go through that, too, and, and with this committee. But we did samples of others, Lynn and Lowell. These gateway cities that were really languishing are starting to thrive, and it's all because of the implementation of a formal public art policy program. of the implementation of a formal public art policy program. And I, I just think that we're positioned right now to be able to do that.
It'll put us on par with other communities that are doing the same thing and are doing it successfully, essentially.
We have some counselors that have questions, and I know that Counselor Dionne, who is the author of the resolution, there was an amendment made to include some other groups to come to this meeting. However, with, with time constraints, we decided to save that for another meeting and I'm almost wondering if this should be tabled in an ordinance and also be sent to municipal priorities committee of economic development and tourism and gone through there, but so that those groups could all come and speak. Counselor Dionne?
Yeah, I think to a certain extent, part of the catalyst for this also is the fact that our waterfront was recently designated as, as a cultural art and culture, has an art and culture designation now on the waterfront. But this policy and the art wouldn't be limited to that area, it would be citywide, correct?
Absolutely not, citywide, absolutely.
It's a citywide policy.
Yeah. And with all due respect, I'm not sure until the commission is formed that you need all those people at the table because they really don't know anything about this. It was our initiative that we put in place to send forth to you. So until a commission is actually set, at that point, other groups may want to be part of that commission and appointed to it by the council and the mayor. But I don't know that they know anything about what's even in here.
Yeah, I think, I think for my part, having you here was number one step, obviously.
We put about a year and a half's work into everything that we've done so far, so...
Right, right. So, yeah, so deservedly, getting your input, your, your perspective, your policy is very important. And I think, you know, this is gonna be an ongoing, this isn't something that's gonna happen overnight, it's gonna be an ongoing process. I think we have a lot more to learn about it. I certainly would be on board with sending it to Counselor Pereira's committee, absolutely. To have those ongoing conversations, see what direction we're going to and to get, you know, more further explanation and understanding from you. I think the idea of the, of bringing other people in was strictly because there are just, there are other people involved in the city that are doing art things or cultural things or whatever. So it wasn't a matter of, just more a matter of, like you say, down the road, getting input and seeing what is going on in the city and what type of picture that there is gonna be moving forward. So with that, I yield.
Counselor Lee?
I don't personally see a problem with having a more inclusive conversation with other groups of people who have the same interests in making art policy, you know, a betterment of our city. So I mean, I, I see where, where Counselor Dionne was coming from of trying to make that more of an inclusive conversation. I'm reading the, the details of this policy suggestion and I really, it's hard not to get excited from someone who's grown up in the city, grown up in the poorer, poorer parts of the city, seen lots of people with a lot of talent, graffiti, art, things like that. Tons of conversations with me before I became a city councilor about, hey, what can you do about things like this? And it looks like there's a potential here for an outlet for teenagers, especially specifically teenagers who have all this talent and gift and often don't have an outlet for it. I go down the parks, you got places tagged all over the place. I've seen some success in some areas of, of other parts of the country where they have these designated areas for the teens to do things such as, you know, such as that. I'm not sure if that's a part of this specific policy, but I think this is a...
Yeah, our recommendation would be that the commission have representation from one of the local high schools.
Absolutely. And you have that, you have that in this, in this policy where you have a representative from schools and things like that. And, and just to go back to Counselor Dionne's point, the more, the more inclusive this conversation is, I think the more uniform you're gonna have. And if you do have a council that has different parts of, of, of the background of the city involved in that discussion and decision-making process, it's only gonna be better. So I, initially, right now, I, I support it. I would love to move forward with this, like I'm on your side on this, but I do think that we have to do more hashing out of the details. I'm concerned, not, not concerned, but I'm curious as to, is there a financial component to this that...
No, it's all volunteer.
Right.
The commission does not get paid.
What would, so there wouldn't be a funding mechanism for some of the projects in this?
No, a, a commission, a commission basically for a public art policy is to guide the city, keep an inventory of our current policy, set rules in place for public art, how to jury that art.
Yep.
And that's why you need certain and specific people that sit on that commission that really, really do have the experience. This commission needs to be an experienced commission.
Yep.
It can't just be, you know, Joe Schmo. It's gotta be someone that actually understands public art, understands what public gardens are, an obrist...
I would also say that there's people who have an investment in making sure that the youth is being reached out to and it's a vibrant opportunity for the youth in the city too. I, I think that's a key component to this.
Yes, and that's why we've incorporated youth as part of the commission for this because it's important.
Before, I mean, I'm just, I'm just gonna give the floor back, but I, I wanna support this, I think it should be, it should go to Counselor Pereira's subcommittee as well. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pereira.
I want to take the time to thank the Dennises. Sandy and Dave have worked very hard over many, many years, not just the past eight, but a couple who is a fine example of wanting to do better in Fall River and, you know, getting up and doing something to try to make a difference. So sometimes I hear just a lot of negatives, and I don't think that when people like the both of you come forward with something positive to do and all the years you've been trying to put this together, I just want to personally say thank you on behalf of the city because you really have done a lot. I love the hydrangea plants, when are they coming back out?
Well, the hydrangea plant got put on hold because of COVID, but the drought, the drought killed us last year, so everything from last year will be starting in April this year, so...
We already have a grid for, I think it's around 100 hydrangea plants that we planted around the waterfront. Yeah, I'd like to see that, that, that looks very pretty.
We're looking for volunteers to dig and plant.
Let you know when.
My hydrangea plant has never bloomed.
Well, we have an expert, we have an expert from the Heritage Gardens.
But I have no problem with this being referred to the committee, and if it comes to, to pastors and it comes to my committee, I'm looking at next week to have a meeting to get this going, we just gotta keep going.
It'll be available.
I would make that motion, I would make that motion now to send it to the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism.
Motion made, do you have a second? Counselor Lee, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for putting it on the agenda, I appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Motion adjourned, made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.